Roll call.
Mayor Hicks.
Here.
Council Reynolds.
Here.
Council Boskis.
Here.
Council Lucero.
Here.
Council Paliya.
Here.
Please welcome in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Prove of the agenda. The motion to approve the agenda? Second.
Second.
Council Reynolds?
Yes.
Council Boskis, Council Lucero?
Yes.
Council Paliya?
Yes.
Citizens to address the council, Justin. How do you say your last name, buddy?
Chris.
Mandiola.
Chris.
Mandiola. Okay.
Uh, I work over at...
Just hold the button.
Did you break it?
Yes, I don't know how to turn it on.
We'll blame Mark now that he touched it.
Hold the button. The on button?
The on button? You go. Give it to him, Shay, she'll take care of it. Okay, Justin, what's up?
Uh, I work over at All Subs on First Street, number 200. Uh, I work there graveyard every night so far and for about a month and a half now, the stoplight right there on First and Washington, the light port has been out. And I've been seeing drivers every time I go out for a smoke break, just hauling through there. I've been seeing a lot of street races starting there.
And now we're fixing to pave that road and that's the last thing we need is straight roads since down First Street. You got a comment about it, Mark?
Yes. So, what's going to happen is that intersection, we're, uh, we're going to address it with the new, uh, the new First Street. And that stoplight and those two poles are going to be removed. And so we'll paint the stop, uh, before you get to the stop on that intersection.
Okay, but that doesn't help us now.
Okay.
Well, there'll be all new signage on both sides, stop three way and then on the road on the, on the road.
Okay, but we're talking about First Street when, guys?
Here, the breaking ground here in about another month.
Okay, in another month, but for a month, we're gonna have what going on there? Street racing?
There, there are stop signs that are there, but if that's not adequate, we could have that light pole turned back on. That's fine.
Turn the light pole back on until we get this, uh...
Easy enough, Mayor.
And you know, uh, I don't know, if that problem continues there after we do the payment, if it gets worse?
Yeah.
Especially with racing, I need to know about that, guys.
I mean, I'd be letting my regular officers that come in at night to get their...
So they do swing by there?
Yeah, they do swing by and I'll let them know like, hey, about 30 minutes, you guys missed a street race or someone hauling through the stop sign.
Did you get that, Alde?
Yes, sir.
Let's, uh, pick it up a little there.
Yeah.
Justin, thank you very much for your concern.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Public discussion on... Comment on our charter, we are not in compliance with the charter. Approval of the regular city council meetings with six twenty-four. Anybody see any corrections? One's gone twice. Entertaining. Motion to approve. Second. Selective. Council Reynolds?
Yes.
Council Boskis? Council Lucero?
Yes.
Council Paliya?
Yes.
City manager's report.
So you have a hard copy packet in front of you. First item in gross receipts revenue history. And we've been tracking the history of our gross receipts. If you'll notice, the very bottom blue column, uh, it gives the average for the each year. If you look at FY 2018, 19, I estimated May and June because we don't have those in our system yet. We haven't gotten, uh, payments for those from the tax and rev. So I estimated those, but it looks like we're, we're staying about steady. Um, in 1516, we were about a million above and same with 1718, but if you'll notice, both of those had those high million dollar payments. In 1516, it was in August and then in 1718, it was in March.
That would be La Salavito's Middle School and Grant High School. We should have another bump with what we got going on at the high school now, put it in the track. So that'll make this month a little bit better. We'll get, we'll get another bump. Every time there's a major construction, we get the construction bump because the taxes that go to that construction company go to where they're working out of. Okay? So...
So it looks like we're staying pretty steady. Um, we haven't seen a huge decrease, which is good to see. And then the next page is your lodgers tax. Um, I did get from the front office today, the, the last quarter lodgers, which was about a hundred thousand. So it looks like in 2018, at the very last column on the right, says 277, as of, 277,000 as of March. Add another hundred thousand, so it's 377. So even though that's less than last year, it's pretty comparable, uh, with 2017. And it looks like, looks like we've kind of had it up and down where we're in the 400,000s, then it goes back down to 300,000s. So that's been a little up and down. I don't know that we know why, but, um, that's staying fairly steady as well. Then golf course revenue history, um, I don't have this fiscal year, but we've been tracking that on a separate form and we do look like our golf course revenue is down by about 35,000 this year. And I compared all the different, um, components that we've taken revenue and the restaurant has stayed about the same where we're seeing a decrease in green fees. And so, um, Kim attributes that sum to the Gallup golf course opening. We're not seeing as many Gallup individuals here, but we continue to track that. And then on your, uh, agenda number four, on this, um, sheet says Marketing Director. Our Marketing Director will be attending the Basic Economic Development Course in Silver City. It's about a week long and I put the flyer there. Talks about some of the topics that they'll be covering and I think it'll be really helpful as we work on increasing tourism and work on marketing our community for, for tourists to bring in extra outside dollars. Then on number five, the city is asked to support the census. So we've been receiving a lot of information on how we as a city can support that effort. And the reason it's important for us to support the census is that it gets a count that helps us obtain additional federal dollars for our area based on population. And it, it helps in many ways and a lot of times, especially in rural communities, it's really hard to capture everybody that live in outlying areas. And so, um, we'll be working closely with the federal government to make sure that the census goes over well here. Number six, meeting the greenhouse owners, the Bright Green Group. The mayor and I had a meeting with some of the owners of the Bright Green Group and they're sending us a list of things that we can do to help support their initiative, but they're wanting to know how much water will be available for them. Um, so I'll have to be researching how much they're requesting and how much we have available, but they sound serious this time to get that operation back up and running. Of course, we heard, heard the same thing about five years ago when I first started, um, that they were gonna have it back up, but that would be wonderful. They're looking at doing, uh, operation here in Grants and then one also in Akama. So they're working with our tribal partners over in that area. We will keep you posted and they're promising about 150 jobs for our area. Um, golf course feedback, I included a letter that we received from the New Mexico Women's Nine Hole Golf Association and, um, I thought it'd be great if you guys saw that feedback. Talks about how pleased they were at our golf course and how much they enjoyed the course. Number eight, councilor's request for non-payment. So I just, I just wanted to iterate that anytime we have any request from citizens or council, we do take those requests serious and we do our best to try to meet those needs and requests. We especially put a high priority on city council requests and we know that you're speaking on behalf of your constituents and everything you've ever requested have been, um, things that we know are important. Um, you have to realize that, uh, we have a lot that we're working on currently. So when you bring something new to us, it may take a little bit of time to get it accomplished, but I'll try to keep communicating with you what the steps we're taking. But, um, I included in here a, a letter from the attorney regarding Councilor Reynolds' request to not be paid as a councilman to contribute her money back to other projects. And when this request first came in, Anna Brown, the human resource, met with the attorneys and, um, they indicated to us that it would not be legal. And then it came up again this past January and I included my email to the attorneys and their response to me that basically, uh, while you all are in office, we cannot change your compensation, whether it's to up it or lower it. And that's based on the New Mexico Constitution. So as we move towards, um, the end of your terms, if you all have recommendations one way or the other, we could look at, uh, changing some language to accommodate what you feel is best for our community and for future councilors. But I just wanted to show that we did, we did respond on that and had gotten legal advice and unfortunately, we're told that legally we could not change that. And then number nine, um, I attended the city managers conference that they have every, it's either June or July. And there were about 17 city managers there, but the things that they covered with us were navigating FEMA funds, which is, I hope we never have to work on that too much. We've done a little bit when the George Hanisch Bridge went out, but it's very hard to access FEMA funds, those are federal funds and they, uh, Rio de Janeiro had a fire and I think they had flooding, but they talked to us a lot about the things you need to have in place and so that was very helpful to me as a manager. And then they had another presenter talk about cybersecurity and some of the things we take for granted that we need to have in place to protect our data and our citizens' data and our system. And then another workshop, a gentleman, Ron Price, wrote the book Play Nice in the Sandbox at Work. He has another book, Play Nice in the Sandbox at Home. Great speaker, um, talked a lot about minimizing conflict and using conflict to our benefit. And then they had a panel of young entrepreneurs from Rio de Janeiro that talked to us about what they were doing to market their community and open up new businesses and stuff. And that was very helpful that I'm sharing some of that information with our Marketing Director. But very, very helpful workshop and, um, learned a lot and it always brings you, you know, brings you back home motivated to keep improving and trying to make positive changes.
Questions for the manager? Sidney?
Yeah.
Patty? Rick?
Yeah, um, on the golf course, I know we've been, we've been, uh, trying to work on some of the things that need to be improved out there. It's been about maybe two months since we ran out there and talked to Kim on, on, on some of the issues, the major issues out there and we still haven't seen any improvement. And I know it doesn't happen overnight, but, um, uh, we just can't concern about some of the areas of, uh, that are being neglected and, uh, it's kind of too short for, for anybody that's coming from out of town to visit our course and it's, um, it's almost embarrassing. But just wanna see if there's any planning placed that are gonna take care of like, like a lot of the big sand bunkers that are overgrown with weeds and, and grass.
Well, I know the staff have been manually attacking some of the smaller ones. Some, I think there's one or two that are quite large and they're, um, prepared to use heavy equipment. I don't know if they've started that yet, but, um, she talked about the, the equipment that they're gonna dig it all up and start from scratch basically to reline those. Yeah, some...
It's a bit of work, but, um, yeah, and then some other areas we're concerned where some of the greens and fairways were, had a lot of bear spots.
Right. I know they did reseed those.
Did they?
And I don't know if all of them, but I know she talked about reseeding some of them, the major ones.
I haven't seen any reseeding at all, so not to deal with Kim, I know where those are, but, yeah, um, I guess I know it doesn't happen overnight, but I'd like to see some improvement, you know, even if it's gradual. I just hate to see that course go to waste and get too far where, where some of those, um, issues are gonna take bigger and bigger work, uh, to take care of.
You got anything to add?
Yeah, this goes the same line as Rick here. He said the revenue's down at the golf course. What else are we doing to it, right? Because we have to correct the problem, which...
You gotta remember too, golf, golfing is down nationwide, guys. It's not just here.
No, I'm, I'm a president because we just call that the revenue's down. I don't care what...
No, it's, it's everybody throughout the whole nation, obviously, all of us.
Well, um, Kim is, Kim is part of a statewide organization where they put out information and that's the message they're giving her is that, um, their revenues are down as well. And, but, um, Chris in our marketing department, she's been making little cards and I know she gave the mayor a bunch, but free round of golf. Um, Chris, I know you're trying to help market.
Right, and then I do, uh, Facebook, um, we have all sorts of promotions on Facebook. I, uh, if you like and share our page right now through the end of July, you get two free burgers, two fries and two medium drinks. I did a thing the other day that if you listed five things and liked and shared about our golf course, then you got a free round of golf and I did give that away and I will do another one of those next week.
You do radio ads, right?
I do. We do radio ads on the, uh, local station, also the station in Rio Rancho. And then we do, uh, every Monday is, uh, Police Firefighter and Veteran Day. Tuesdays is Ladies Day. You get your golf, a hot dog, soda and chips. Let's see, we advertise in the KOA, um, Visitor's Guide that they give to each visitor. And then I did give all of y'all the cards. Also, Kim now has cards where if I give you a card, you go pay, play a round of golf with that card, then I will receive a free round of golf to try to get people to promote, you know, come play my golf course. And then we also have several half-page ads. Other places we have an ad in the Visitor's Guide. And I'd be willing to listen to anything that anybody has to say. I am gonna start advertising in the Love of Magazine and the Amarillo Magazine. So hopefully we'll start bringing some people over here that way also.
So a lot of our marketing tactics are states nearby that people could come for a weekend to our area?
Yeah, we have the billboards outside, too.
Yes. Yeah, the chamber has billboards. And then I had spoke with the Sure Stay Hotel and they're willing to work with me to get a package together where you get a hotel room plus a round of golf, maybe to the Minding Museum, too.
That's a good idea.
Thank you. Good, thank you. Anything else?
Yeah, what kind of solution do we have to get that stuff done at the golf course?
Well, the staff are just working extra hard. We've brought on some summer help that we're trying to make sure everybody's being productive, not wasting time.
And me and Laura have had a talk about this, guys, because you'd be amazed what I see in the morning when I'm riding my bike out there. Okay, I'm out there before the golfers. I'm out there when there's just the workers. And it's amazing when I come rolling up on that bicycle. And they start getting dizzy when they've been standing there with their heads. Okay, and it's, it's ridiculous. There's no pride. And it would, it would take two minutes to do with a shovel. Two minutes, guys. And, and you wouldn't have weeds in the sand traps or any of that crap, but they won't get off of those tractors. We just need to put a shovel on that tractor with them and give them a directive and they don't wanna do it, they can hit the road jack, we can get somebody else. It's that simple. Okay? It's that simple. Anything else for the manager? From her report? Cool, thank you very much. ICIP, I don't got nothing in this list, dude. What's up with that? Says ICIP, I got nothing. You know, man, ain't nobody, nothin' in the bucket.
What?
There you go, bring it out, baby. Let's see what you got.
I didn't know you wanted paper. I was gonna offer him, but if you didn't want him, I was gonna say okay, because most of you guys are familiar with ICIP.
I got so many people wanting different things on the ICIP, buddy.
Ah, that's right here.
Man, dog, this was a waste of paper. Why didn't you just give us the list?
Well, that's what we're gonna do is create the list.
So anyway, it's... Where's last year's list?
Right here, right in front of you. I got it right here.
A lot of this stuff you just gave us, right?
That's last year's list.
And the yellows have been taken care of?
On these ones, I don't, I don't know on that list. I was gonna just identify some items that were in the, like, four years ago. Broadband, George Hanisch, the wastewater treatment plant, those were done. Three years ago, the flooding at Jefferson and Washington, the Riverwalk Trail, the lifelong training center, the library, those are done. Anyway, I'm only mentioning these because these are some big projects that were on the past ICIP lists that we've been, uh, able to, uh, complete. So, so we've been doing, doing good, I think, in regard to the ICIP. So the ICIP stands for Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan. The big, it, it forces the municipalities to have some kind of plan instead of, oh, this one now, so now we need this money from the state. It, it, it creates an organized, uh, responsible plan for any large, large or small projects. Like, for example, last year, um, maybe I didn't do such a good job and didn't make enough calls, but, uh, we did need some cop cars and some trucks for the road department, of which we added after the fact, uh, which was fine. A lot of, a lot of, in a lot of cases that happens, but those items should have been on the ICIP. I just didn't do the due diligence and I didn't call the road department manager or the police department. Actually, I think I did call the police department, but anybody didn't make me aware of them at that time. So anyway, in the next few weeks, I will be making a lot of calls. I would love to get your guys' input. Well, what I do is I listen to all the ideas. I, I like to start with Laura because she's the city manager. A lot of calls go to Laura, so she, I mean, she has a good idea of what, of what, uh, what's necessary, what's so critical that we needed. So I, I always start with Laura and then from there, I, um, I plan on calling every department head this year. Last year I did not call every department head. The year before I didn't call no department head, so I'm learning as I go. But, uh, anyway, I wanna improve this list and, and I want this list to reflect exactly what it's for. What are the city's priorities? Now, we all have wish lists, we all have our own districts that we wish we had this, we, we had that, but in general, and actually it's, I like it because it kind of puts me back to my newspaper act, remember I used to do that? But it's like an unbiased, you know, what's, what's good for the city? Not for this area, not for this area, not for this area, but what's overall good for the city? And that's what this list should have. The items have to be $10,000 or more. They have to have a lifespan of at least 10 years and, uh...
How do cars qualify?
Uh, they qualify. Well, they, they last more than 10 years and they're more than $10,000.
How often do we change cop cars there? Lieutenant?
Sir, our vehicles last probably five to six years.
Thank you very much.
Tell the state, I'm just, I'm just reiterating the requirements. So anyway, uh, I, I would like your guys' ideas.
Roosevelt Bridge.
You guys here from...
Washington Bridge, they're the ones we got left. Washington Bridge, Roosevelt Bridge, they're falling down. And, I mean, they're part of the major arteries. They need to be done. They're gonna cost about a million each and my opinion, those should be the top priority for the city. And that completes every single bridge in this town except for Santa Fe Avenue. And the state can worry about that because it's their road. I mean, that's, that's my opinion, guys. That completes every single bridge in this town and we're good for the next 50 years as far as our bridges are concerned. And, and that does it. I mean, and those should be our priorities. We've gotten all the big ones done. We got the library, we got the wastewater treatment plant, we got First Street, we got Second Street. We're lacking those two bridges, guys. Every other bridge in this community has been done, every single one of them. And those should be our two priorities right there.
So that, that's exactly what I need, but from each, each and every one of you guys. And I will call you guys, I'll call you guys individually.
You're gonna have a, are you gonna have a town hall?
I will have a public hearing, uh, early August, of which then I will have a list that I prepared based on what I've heard and it'll include everyone's input. I would like to limit the list to 10 just because after a list of 10, it really becomes a wish list starting after that.
It's a wish list anyway.
Well...
From the get-go, it's a wish list, okay? But, um, if we have priorities and we're shovel-ready like we are at Roosevelt and like we will be here soon at Washington, because we're shovel-ready at Roosevelt, guys. We are. And road's ready to go.
And we will be shovel-ready at Washington.
And we will be shovel-ready at Washington after this year. That should be our priority right there. And that, like I said, that completes every single bridge in this community, guys.
But then there's items such as well number three.
Oh, yes.
I mean, we have no backup, so if that dies, to me, that's the number one priority, well number three, just because, I mean, that water's the source, right? So we need well number, and it's, it, I'm thinking that will remain number one, but I mean, we'll, we'll see what happens. So what I do is all my public, I'll offer it to Laura, Laura will fine tune and then I'll bring it to you guys before, on, on September 16th.
Where are we at on well three?
It's, uh, it's, the final plans are being reviewed by the Environment Department right now. And, and then at the end of the year, while we don't have construction funding, we're going to the water, we got denied this past year from the Water Trust Board and we're going to the Water Trust Board again for the third year in a row, which is, that's fine, you know? And, uh, but last year we scored a lot higher than we, we did the year before. And I think because we have 100% plans and it's shovel, shovel-ready, the chances will get well number three funded. So, and well number three, that's a perfect example of what the ICIP list is all about. Last year it was number one, or again, then this year it'll be possibly number one again. And, I mean, it just, it tells a story.
Any questions for Laura? Sidney? Patty? Rick? Coleman? Fred? And we'll be here for your public hearing. Make sure you put it on my days off, make sure I'm not working that night. Okay, so I can be here.
Yeah, I plan on having it at the library.
I don't care where you have it, I just make sure you do it on my days off, okay?
Sorry.
Good to be present.
Sounds good.
All right?
Thanks.
Thank you, doll.
Thank you, Dan.
Open Meetings Act Resolution is something we do every single year. And I'll entertain a motion for that open meeting, the Resolution 191636. All it does is say what our meetings are and all that good stuff.
I make the motion for Resolution 19 dash 1636.
Second. So Reynolds?
Yes.
Council Boskis, Council Lucero? Council Paliya?
Yes.
Next one, same thing. Annual certifications and commitments for the CDGB, block grants, you gotta do this annually to stay ahead of what we're doing. And I'll entertain a motion for Resolution 191637, because we will not get no money if we don't pass these resolutions.
I make a motion for Resolution 19 dash 1637, CDBG?
Second. Council Reynolds? Council Boskis, Council Lucero? Council Paliya?
Yes.
Um, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session for possible litigation related to contract issues.
I make the motion.
Second, for a second. On my favor, say aye. We'll be out shortly, guys. I see who's in my chair. We did discuss what we're gonna do with Jacob's contract and we're looking at reducing the water crew by about $300,000, maybe a little more. But that decision will be forthcoming. Um, on that note, uh, I'll make a motion to come back into regular session so we can get out of here.
Make a motion.
Second.
Second.
Comments from the council? Sidney?
I do have a few. One I'm not gonna talk about because, um, I have, what, a few, three weeks ago or so, we, a number of people, everybody on the council received a letter about the lack of working treadmills at the senior central.
Two of them will be there tomorrow, Brandon.
And I went over, I checked it out, met the new person, went back again, toured the town and the availability of treadmills and, and was assured that the treadmills would be arriving and I didn't mention it last meeting because of the water, but, okay, so now it's mentioned. The second one... The second one is, sometimes when we come in here and before the meetings, we have people say a prayer. And then during the meeting, we trash people. Either we be more gentle to the people or we not do prayer, because I don't like the fact of people praying and then trashing people. So I will do my part. I'm not a Christian, but I will stand and do my thing with the prayer and I myself will try and be more gentle with the people. That's it.
Annie?
I gotta thank Jacob. I know they're doing their job and I know they, on Thursday before, what was it, when you had a leak on Santa Fe Avenue right before the parade, that night, what was it?
Wednesday.
Wednesday night and you guys got it done by four o'clock in the morning? I wanna thank you for that because if it would have gotten done, we'd have no parade or we had to reroute the parade. Thank you.
Rick?
No, I'm good.
Fred?
I'm good.
Well, I got something about being politically correct, okay? You don't want us to bash on people, but we go out to town and they call us bastards, okay? I'm sorry, but I'm not gonna take that. These people don't know me, they don't know my dad, they're not even from here, okay? And they're gonna call me names when I go to recycle, because I do recycle and I don't know more now, okay? Neither does Mr. Dick Cochrane or a lot of other people in this town because of the way they're treated by the recycle people, okay? And you want us to be nice to them, but they're allowed to call us bastards. Sorry Sidney, that ain't happening. That's not gonna happen. The second thing I got, what we gotta be aware of here as Democrats, okay? I don't know how many of us on this council are Democrats, but I'm one, okay? I read the Robert Mueller report, took me two weeks to do it. Our Democratic leadership and our progressive people, the progressives out there have been lying to us for two years, over two years now, okay? First it was collusion, he's a, he's a Russian spy. Well, all of that's been debunked, okay? The second lie they've been telling us for years, it's a manufactured crisis at the border. Donald Trump is making that crisis up. Well, guess what? He didn't make it up. It's a real crisis and now they wanna blame ICE and the Border Patrol and everything else. They waived the Constitution. This is our progressives, our Democrats, the leaders that are gonna come to town and wanna be our next senators and stuff. They waived the Constitution while they ripped it up right in front of our faces. Every one of us, they told us lies. Oh, we're here to preserve the Constitution. As soon as they get there, what have they done? Nothing. Investigate the president and more, even though everything has been debunked. So this political correctness, sorry, I'm not in on it, okay? Especially when I go to town and I go to recycle and I'm attacked by a recycler. Why would I throw my stuff on the ground before I throw it into a bin? Okay? They set me up that day. That's all it was, was a setup. And that's something we really need to look at. Who we got volunteering in this community that treats our people that way? Period. But they could treat us that bad and now you want us to sit up here, oh, we need to be nice.
You could turn the other cheek.
You bet you we can. And it would really be nice if they would turn the other cheek instead of coming in here and lying to us, okay?
There is no, no hope.
Yeah, there is hope.
You know there is.
Yes, there is. There's no hope for the progressives because they don't believe in hope. They don't believe in anything except destroying this nation. That's the bottom line here, okay? So don't get me into this political correctness crack and be nice, because that's not gonna fly with me Sidney, especially after I'm treated like shit everywhere I go.
Maybe it could be a little, maybe a little bit nicer.
Maybe, 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 maybe those people out there that you're talking, that we need to be nice to, maybe they could come here and start by apologizing to this council for coming here lying to us about all the recycling and all this stuff. But that's never gonna happen. They're never gonna apologize to me or to you or to anybody else. So, so why even bring it up? Because it makes us feel good. It's like recycling, it makes us feel good. On that note, I'll entertain a motion to end this meeting.
Make a motion.
Second.
Yes, thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Have a good night. It's just amazing that they're not gonna treat us like shit, but we're supposed to be nice.